In listen-only mode.
It's now eight o'clock. It's when Stan will do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the November Whitley County Council meeting. The first one on the agenda today is Dale.
Good morning, council. This is just a brief update, and if this sounds like a broken record, it might be, but I will actually be making an ask of council, and I'll work with the commissioners and council on the broadband, not for a large amount of money, but for a study. And I'm still working with redevelopment on this, on the study. Where the task force is moving forward, and where I've really been focusing on is the countywide solution, and that is with Lakeland as our best option. SERFNet is still looking to do some more, but their ask is kind of substantial for the amount of homes that are actually getting covered, whereas Lakeland, as if you remember from the presentation, they are looking to cover a vast majority of the county, including, you know, places, some of the council members. So what the study is, is that they're looking at seven towers across the county that will cover just so many of the folks not getting served, especially in the rural area. That study is, takes a little bit of funding, and I'm gonna still try to put that together. It's anywhere in the range of thirty to fifty thousand dollars. I'm trying to get redevelopment to pay for some of that. So in two weeks prior to next council meeting, I'll send a packet for you to review, and that is where our approach is. And then, once that study is completed, I'll make sure, you know, that we have the right amount of towers and coverage, but there will be then a follow-on, larger ask still for you to decide if that's something you wanna do. And then I will also, and the task force continue to look on either avenues of funding that, not just an ask of council. At the moment, the SAN Strategy Contract has ended. Zach is helping me a little bit. I'm working the vast majority of that myself. But if the BEAD funding, which we've talked about, finally comes out in a couple of months, we may do some, may ask for some light contract with SAN Strategies to assist us on that. But as of now, we're really looking forward with Lakeland. Lakeland is getting ready to do something in western Allen County soon. They are doing their decalb in Steben County, and so that's my update. Any questions? But again, look for something in a couple of weeks for an ask at next council meeting.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the connection between Lakeland and SERF Internet? Because Cherabusco area is covered by SERF pretty thoroughly.
Right. What I am pleased is that these two are communicating with each other, you know, where SERF is. Lakeland obviously wouldn't need to be, but the, yeah, SERF is in several areas in the county, and, you know, we want to make sure we don't expend dollars where we're duplicating efforts. So there, but there's still plenty of places, I think, in the townships around Cherabusco that don't have coverage that Lakeland would cover.
Anything else for Dale?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Monty Wilkson, Salisbury Library Board Discussion. Monty?
Good morning to you all.
Morning.
I'm here to discuss the library in South Whitley and things that make it work. My feeling is, the system with the libraries in the state of Indiana, it's a bad system. I'll tell you here in a minute why. And also, the town of South Whitley Library is out of control. Okay. We'll start with the system. You as the council pick board members, along with Whitco School Board. Some of you do not live in our taxpayer district, and I don't believe you have the right to spend my money not being in the district. And then you got the school board that pick board members, and some of them don't even live in our county. And I don't think that's right. It's a bad system. I'm not blaming you. It's the system that the state has developed or made. And I'm sure you as the council would not appreciate Allen County telling you to how to run your jail, or if you need to build it. Same situation. I'm sure you agree on that. So that's kind of why I'm saying we got a bad system. It's the way the system works. I just feel that the school board, the council here, pretty much gets a name and you rubber stamp them. There's no background check, no questions asked, from what I've seen and have been told. So that's the bad system. Now, going to the library. Our town of South Whitley's library is sitting on 1.7 million dollars as of September. That is over two years of budget. And probably, the next draw this fall, I would suspect that number's gonna be over 2 million. Now, you ask, why do they need all that money? That is a good question. They got seven board members down there on that library, and I have talked to three of them. I'm not mentioning names. That's not the kind of person I am. Of those three that I ask, I ask them, where's the money? What's it invested in? And how much is it earning? Guess what answer I got? I don't know. One was a president, one was a vice president. To me, that's dereliction of duty. I hope you guys know where our money is in the county. So, the rumor is, and I haven't got facts on this yet, it's kind of hard to find facts with this library, they may be earning 1%. Just think, if they was earning 4%, that's three extra percent on 1.7 million. If you understand numbers, that's a chunk of change. Now, you ask, how do they get all that money? The tax rate on Richland Township and Cleveland Township is 17.7 cents a hundred. That is double Columbus City's library. That is five times Cherabusco's library. This thing was set up about 20 years ago. It was a scam, and nobody did their homework. And it's still going on. And when you make a mistake every year for 20 years, meaning compounding a mistake, after 20 years, that mistake balloons out of control. South Whitley Library is out of control. Now, if you take the money that they received last year and compare it to this year's spring, they increased their amount by 6.6%. There's another out of control. And just so you know, Cleveland and Richland Township are the two highest tax rates townships in our county. Now, it's sad that me as a board member has to come up here and explain this to you, 'cause our trustees are not doing their job. I've talked to them all. I talked to the trustees that started this mess, and they all agreed with me. We got snuckered. The amount was double what they expected, and it's still going on. Sad. It's really sad. So I'm up here standing in front of you, council, and I'm working on a few things, and I'm not gonna explain them to you. My trustee, sad to say, did not do what I was asking him to do as a board member. But fortunately, he is resigning, as at the end of the year. So hopefully, me as a board member, as an individual, will try to get something done on my own. But all I'm asking you as the council here this morning, is when you get a name for this library, and I believe that's what they do, is they handpick them, and they bring you a name, and I don't know exactly why you go about signing off, but I just hope that you ask some questions and check out the person. And then when you do, find out what that board member's doing on the library. Follow up on your job, 'cause I don't think you are. This is why it's been going on for 20 years. It's out of control. And I will tell you this. I was at the Republican deal there at the 4H Center, and I got, talked to a guy named Abbott. He claimed he was my state representative. I'm not sure about that one. I think it's Chris Judy. But I talked to him about this situation, and Abbott asked me a question. He says, well, if they got all that money, why do they keep asking for more? You know, I told him, because they can. The system that's set up, they just keep taking. It's a bad system. I will be meeting with Chris Judy, and maybe Abbott too, sometime here in the near future. What can we do about this library situation? I was told 10 years ago that the state was looking into consolidating these libraries. I'm not really for consolidating, but when we got a mess like this, what do we do? So I'm standing up here in front of you, not really wanting to do this, had a long night, short morning, but I ask that people do their job and do their homework. I just feel the lacking of this society we have today, that people just go about their business and just move on. Sad. A lot of people just aren't doing their jobs, and people look the other way. And it's sad that me, as a board member, not trustees coming up here and standing in front of you. And I've talked to the Cleveland Township trustee. I just, I think he's a good guy, but he's weak. Some people are afraid to stick their necks out for the right. And it's sad that we don't have more people to do it. I don't like to do it. I feel with the way things are set up, councils, just do your job, and things will work out. So I thank you for your time, and I hope we can make improvements.
Hang on, Monty. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
So I'll speak for myself, and I don't, I don't think I can speak for the board. Let's go back to the library board appointment. I think the way we work and is, just like, let's use Alice Nicodemus, the last one we appointed. I, this is the way I look at it. If Cherabusco has somebody who wants to come on, I listen to what John says, 'cause John knows who that person is and lives in that community. I live in South Whitley, you know that. I own Alice Nicodemus. This is her third term. So we talk a little bit. We just don't say yes and go on. That's the way I think our council works, is they, they look towards the council member that whose district that's in, and they kind of go off of what we say, which I think, if you'll agree with me or not, but that's the way it is. And I think at one time, you sat on the library board, didn't you?
Yes, I did. I know how it works.
Then...
I know, I know down at the state of Indiana, I went to the convention, and you know what the first thing on their projection is at the top?
Nope.
Very first thing says taxpayers first. And you know, I was on that board for eight years, and I believe in term limits. Eight years, maximum anybody should stay on the board. Get off for eight, and you get back on.
Okay.
You know what? In those eight years, you know how many times we talked about taxpayers?
Nope.
Virtually none. We were working on how do we spend our money down, because the money was accumulating.
So let's just use Salisbury Library Board. You were on that board. Why didn't you try and get the taxes lowered back when you were on the board?
I did.
Well, never told.
I was one against four.
Okay.
One against four. But I did have a little help.
Okay. Any other questions?
We cut $300,000 off of that board in three years.
Okay.
They wouldn't cut the budget, but they, since we had so much money on that board, or on that library books, we cut $100,000 for three straight years. And then they got nervous, because the money started going down, and the way the budgets are set up, you can't just move the money around.
Right.
And so one of the line items was getting too low, so they bailed out, and they wouldn't allow us to do it. That was shortly after I got off. So to answer your question, and you know this, if you're one against four, you're wasting your time. And I'll tell you about Alice Nicodemus, since you brought her name up. She was the one that I asked, where's the money? What's it invested in? What are we earning? She didn't know. I said, that's dereliction of duty. I said, you should be fired. And you know what she told me? I want to be fired. I don't want to be on this board.
Well, that's not what they brought to us when we voted on it.
I'm telling you what I heard at the board meeting. I was at the board meetings.
Okay.
And just for your knowledge, they didn't pass a budget this year, that I know of, now that you wanted to bring up a question. They did not pass a budget.
But that doesn't come for us, so we don't know that either.
They got nervous, because there was a bunch of us speaking up. And they said at the meeting, the last meeting, that they were supposed to vote on it. We got seven members there. Guess how many showed up? Four. Three of them didn't show up for a budget meeting signing. Guess what happened? One said no. It didn't pass. So what did they do? They told us they were gonna have a special meeting, have to have a special meeting that passed the budget. And to my knowledge, they never had it. They found a little loophole not to pass the budget, and it reverts back to the previous year's budget. They didn't want to face us again. There's a problem down there. Serious problem. I'm not for cutting the library out totally. I'm looking for fairness and equal, equalness. It's out of control. Any more questions? I got a whole bunch of stuff. I could sit here for hours on end.
We're good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The sheriff's supposed to be next, but he came in and said he wouldn't be ready until December. So now we have Mark and Kyle.
It's just me today. For many of you that don't know me, I'm Kyle Pepler, Whitley County Maintenance Supervisor. We're coming today to you guys for a request for a vehicle purchase. We're looking at getting a truck for our department. Currently, we do have a van for our department that is equipped with tools. We have a maintenance technician that is in that van every day. When he is in that van, and we need to go pick up large supplies, it's usually me, has to go and get, if we're saying we're picking up plywood or whatever, we may be picking up paper or whatever, we have to go and grab the van from him and go and utilize another vehicle, or utilize that vehicle and leave him with the current Trailblazer that I'm driving. The Trailblazer that we have right now is a 2008, has 125,000 miles on it, so it's getting up there in age. We are starting to have more issues with the Trailblazer. The quotes that I have before you guys, there's three quotes, or guys and gals, excuse me. There is three quotes there, two from Kelly Chevrolet and one from City Ford. I do have an additional one from City Ford, but it was super high, so I kind of tossed that one out for right now. Some reasons that we, again, need the truck, of course, for getting supplies from job site to job site, it would help us. Along with this purchase of a truck, we're looking at also getting a plow. Right now, we take care of 14 buildings and properties. We do not have a snowplow in our fleet, big enough to handle large parking lots. We do have small Kubota tractors. They are only good for city lots, so small lots. There are times when we're up here at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning in the government center, we just barely get it done by 8:00 to get a plow. Along with the snowplow, we did get quotes for the new county jail, because we don't have any preparation for that, as far as plowing that. We got two quotes for that. They came, they both came in around $1,000 per plow. So to give you guys an idea of what that's gonna cost, if we had that plowed and salted, we're looking at $1,000. In the past, we've spent, just this past year, we spent $3,000 on plowing all of our county lots. That was outsourced plowing that we could not handle with our Kubota equipment that we have. Looking back the past four years, we've spent close to almost $17,500 in the past four years. So if you guys approve this, this will fully pay for itself within five, well, one more than five years, I guess. I didn't actually figure out the number, but we're looking at six, seven years probably, but it'll pay back for the equipment. I do have a request. If you guys approve the vehicle purchase, if we could go with the Ford, whichever City Chevrolet or Kelly Chevrolet, whichever one you guys approve, I would request we go with the Ford, just because the usability of the cab would make a lot more sense for plowing, if we use it for that, if we approve for it. And that's about it. Do you guys have any questions?
Is City Ford and Kelly Ford both the same trucks, the same outfitters, the same?
Yep. They're the exact same quote. It just came back. One of them was a little higher.
Okay. All right.
Why do you prefer the Ford over the other?
It's a great question. Looking at the interiors of the cabs, it, when you're plowing, and Thor can attest to this, when you're plowing, you want to be, have your eyes up here when you're plowing, constantly visual. Ford has all their upfitter switches for their lights and everything up here, up in the cab. Chevy has theirs down here underneath. So getting down there to reach down there could create an issue, adds time to the total plowing that you're giving it.
And have the commissioners talked about this, Chad?
Yes. So the commissioners, Matt, Teresa, and Rob are able to meet with, I think, you and Mark. And the commissioners are supportive of the purchase. It does seem to me that it's something that's going to be very much needed with our new large law.
Yep.
And we recognize the aging of our vehicle, and a need to rotate that out. So if we do it, it kind of just makes sense to, while we're rotating it out, upgrade to something that's more useful.
With the purchase of the truck and the plow, and not hiring out these jobs, are you gonna be asking, coming to force for another employee?
At the time, right now, no, we're not. Right now, the way we work is, our department's on call 24/7. I was supposed to be off yesterday. I fielded phone calls from the jail yesterday because they had stuff going on. So our plan right now is, we're still gonna be on call 24/7. With getting a truck with a plow, it's gonna greatly speed up our plowing process.
Sure.
It's gonna be a huge time saver. We are still gonna be using our Kubota tractor that we have downtown, plowing sidewalks and stuff like that on the county buildings that we have. But it will be a great time saver. It's still gonna be, we're still gonna get up at 2:30, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, and getting up and plowing is just gonna be a great time saver, I guess. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Cal, was you figuring on a salt, to spread salt with this?
Spreader, yes. That was gonna be separate. We were gonna cover that in our budget. We do have money still available in our budget to purchase that separately.
Do you have any money in your budget, or was there any thought in this last cycle as far as for your budget for next year to cover any of the expense of this vehicle?
We did.
Insurance, gasoline, I mean, is that all taken into account?
It is.
And what the cost of the vehicle?
Yep. So all the, we'll call them additionals. All the additionals, we do have that factor into our budget for next year. Originally, we had, I don't know if you remember, we did bring it to you guys during budget time, asking for it, and then we were asked to bring it as an additional request.
Right. Take it, you took it out of your, you had it in, and you took it out of your budget. Yeah.
Yep.
And you want, you want to do that for 2024? Yeah?
If we could.
Okay.
What's the timeframe? If we were to move forward with this today, when would you have?
So I did contact Kelly Chevrolet and City Ford both. They both said it would take about 12 weeks. So if we order it today, we have 12 weeks until we can get it. So there'll still be time to get it in this winter season.
And you have to send it out to get everything loaded on it, like the highway department?
It, we wouldn't be going full scale like highway department is. We would just be getting the plow. Really, we just need to plow in strokes on it to get started. And that would, from what I have heard from WA Jones, they're ready to go whenever we get the truck.
Chad, do you have any ideas on which, where we could get the money from, general or something else?
I'm not sure if that was...
I was thinking general, when we had discussed it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was part of the conversation. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it.
I mean, the vehicle's used for the entire county, specifically, you know, more for the jail probably, but it would be in use for the entire county.
I see it being used for all, but I mean, this...
We still have plenty of money in general for 2024. Okay. Further discussion? Further discussion?
Does the mechanic at the highway department do work on maintenance and oil changes and stuff on your vehicles? Or how does that happen?
Right now, we do oil changes on all of our vehicles locally. So we'll either go to Reed's here in town, which is just right next door to the courthouse, just for easeability. We can get the vehicle back right pretty quick. But we have used other oil change places too. We can, I'm sure, or for sure entertain that with County Highway.
That was something I think that was commonplace years ago that has a, I don't believe that the highway mechanic has worked on general county-owned vehicles since Kevin Calatander left. So, I mean, I think that with our, with the size of our fleet, it might make sense moving forward. I'm not at all recommending this now, but it might make sense in the future to look at adding a mechanic who I oftentimes hear from the department heads saying there would be a great cost savings initiative if we had someone who could do changing light bulbs or oil changes or regular fluid changes at the highway garage. But currently, everyone price shops and uses who they feel are the best and best priced. Basic maintenance items.
What's the lifespan are you anticipating on this?
That's a great question. Currently, the van that we purchased that our department has, or that you guys purchased, we got that in 2020. That, or that van has 11,000 miles on it. So it's just in-town miles. They're going to be low miles. For the truck, we expect to have this in our department for 20-plus years if we can.
I'm just trying to just figure out, because it's several thousand dollars to change. And just trying to see if you had it long enough to.
They came up to just shy of, I think it's right around $800 if I remember. I had it written down somewhere.
No, I'm just looking at the final balances, I guess.
Yep. And I am very appreciative for the Trailblazer I have. It does, it does wonders having a vehicle. When I first started this job, I was using my personal vehicle. And it's, I have a truck at home, but it's a lot easier working out of maintenance out of a truck than it is in a small SUV.
Just out of curiosity, I know you guys have put some thought into this. Where will you keep your blade at? I mean, are we going to keep it inside the fence down at the highway or where? I mean, you guys don't really have a home right now.
Right. Right now, we've kind of been talking. I know there's been some talks about purchasing another building downtown potentially. We've talked about potentially putting it there or out at the jail. I know they're talking about building a outbuilding out there. I've had talks with the sheriff about putting that out there also. So it would be stored behind a fence in there.
Kyle, what's causing the large differences between the City Ford and the Kelly? For the basic, for the market selling price?
Ford, they don't know, don't know if I can answer that.
You're looking at 44,812, 45,580, and then City Ford comes in at 52,450. What causes that?
The only thing I can guess is it's.
Can you ask?
How much they mark up their vehicles. I've asked them a couple of times whether their prices are becoming more comparable. And that's, they told me that's the best part.
No Jones like us, we would buy local if we can.
Then you have a conversation about matching. Because I mean, that's a $3,000 difference roughly, so. Yeah, I mean, if we can keep it in county and keep, you know, that would be my preference as well. But, I mean, I, for three grand, I mean, driving 20 minutes to Southwest Side Fort Worth is not a big deal. So, I mean, maybe you could talk to somebody over there and see if they could at least match.
Okay.
Or even ask City Ford if they can.
Well, that's what I mean. That's what I mean. Go in the City Ford and asking if they can match the quote that we got from Kelly.
Yes, I can definitely ask them that.
And then obviously making sure your trim's the same and all that other stuff.
Exactly.
You know, the same options, all that.
Yep. Right now, all the, all the quotes are comparable. I know the paperwork they sent me doesn't exactly state that, but we have checked it a couple of times and everything is comparable.
I would be in favor of this. I can see the need for it, you know. What's the plan on the Blazer?
Right now, our department, if you guys do approve this, we do not need the Blazer. So whether that goes up on Gov. deals or if another department needs it, I mean, they're welcome to use it.
How many miles did you say was on that?
There's 125,000.
Might be worth just throwing a for sale sign in it and seeing if some.
That's what we intend to do.
16-year-old. Yeah.
Can the head go through an auction type of situation?
Yeah, Gov. Deals is a government auction site. So we use that heavily and that's what our intention is with that Trailblazer.
You going to make that a motion, or you want to wait until Kyle gets confirmation from City Ford and do it in December? Or you want to give him the okay to do it now? City Ford won't budge, let him go ahead with Kelly? Or how would you like to do this?
I would motion we approve up to the max that Kelly had, 55,459. And then if City won't budge, then I would say go ahead. Because 12 weeks from now puts us out to what, beginning of February?
Beginning of February.
So.
Does that quote include the switch change though? It does, it does it?
So the outfitter switches, that is part of the package with the vehicle.
For all three quotes?
Yes.
Okay.
It's hard to believe that they don't have white trucks at number lot.
So City Ford does have a red truck with a plow ready to go. It's a 24 model. That one actually came back at 57,274. That's why I kind of just didn't include it because we're, they've, in talking with them, and they've used it on their lot for two years. So I can only imagine there may be issues with the truck and they're just trying to, I can't say that for sure. On a two-year-old truck, you're, or year-old truck, you're, don't know what you're getting into.
So I have a motion from Nick. I need a second.
I'll second.
Second, the.
Did you got to clarify which account, finite, we're going to take it out of?
General, the way I look at it right now, that's kind of what the commissioners were leaning towards.
That should be, that needs to come from Nick.
Okay. Nick, you got to do that.
Okay. So I'll amend and say.
We'll start off.
55,459 out of county general.
And I'll second.
Second by John. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? All right. Anything, thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Next is a personnel committee update. Ed, I don't think Ed's here. Is he? Okay. You, you might have to help me out here, Jennifer and Joan. Ed from probation came in and he wanted to upgrade existing probation officer position to Assistant Chief Probation Officer. There is no additional pay. There is no, or stipend. There's nothing. He just wants, wants the title changed. So I believe they could do more things when he is out of the office. Is, is that pretty much right, Jennifer?
Well, I mean, the way he explained it was is that the person in the position's currently already doing a lot of the duties.
Yes. Yep.
That are in the proposed job description. So yeah, so just the approving the upgrade and then approving the new job description.
Yep.
So it would be changing the job description to cover the items that he's currently doing.
But, but no increase in payment or anything? Just.
Correct. Because per the state guidelines that probation officers have, that position wouldn't get paid unless there are a certain number of probation officers and we don't, we don't meet that threshold yet.
Okay. And the personnel committee passed it, agreed with him, so I guess we just need a motion and a second to go ahead and allow him to do that. Are there any other discussion?
Maybe motion to approve the personnel committee's recommendation for the title change.
I got a motion from John.
A second.
A second from Thor. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. Commissioners report.
First, I want to say that we had record numbers for voter turnout and early voting, and the election team did amazing. I mean, they, they managed it. There was one, one or two days that they saw over 600 people for early voting in one day. And so we applaud them. We're thankful and grateful for the work that they did. We had our jail open house just two weeks ago, I believe, and that went very well. We had somewhere over, around 500 people come through. I mean, I know Tom, John, and Joan, you were there and you saw how, how many people came through. It was very positive feedback. So an update on that, we look to start moving, hopefully as early as late November, we can start moving some, moving the inmates and have that building be fully functional. So the, the current grand total price, what we're looking at for the build is $34,876,471. And that's just somewhere around $8,7,905 less than what it was priced when, when the project first begun. So we're very pleased with that. We're, we're just under budget, but, but essentially right on budget, so we're very pleased. And then for the contingencies that we set aside for poor, poor soil remediation, winter conditions, overtime, geotech testing and construction, overall contingencies, we still have 890,546.56 cents left in overall contingencies that we would look to get back. And then that could be used toward our final payout, which is coming. But we're very, very pleased. We again do a wonderful job on the build, on the build of the building. So just a general update there. So I know that Tom had reached out to everyone. The commissioners are still wanting to, I think, cautiously proceed with the purchase of the Bowen Center. We've had discussions about this before. It's the building at the corner of Chauncey and Market. And unfortunately, our resolution that we had planned to bring is not yet prepared by our legal team. So we feel we could, we could still cautiously move forward with, with some appraisals at this time and, and then hopefully come back in December. The appraisals will help the commissioners in negotiating a price. And I've, I've talked to Mark Strudman already, and assuming that we get council's approval to move forward with appraisals, Mark is willing to go on the roof and spend some time looking things over and just spend a little bit more time in the building to make sure that, that we're comfortable with what we're proceeding with. So, and we have the funds available for the appraisals already in the commissioner budget. So we're not asking for anything. We're going to check with legal and make sure we can still move forward. But just a, just for general awareness that we're still cautiously proceeding on that. And of course, that has the garage underneath. We talked earlier about how we would deal with the blade. The garage underneath that building, we feel could be used by the maintenance staff. And then our intention for the main floor would be probation, but also, as I mentioned before, with some, some days having 600 people through the courthouse for early voting, wouldn't it be great? And doesn't it make sense to get that on the ground floor somewhere and away from the courthouse where they're also having court hearings and all the things in addition to early voting? So that's kind of our vision. We've talked with the election team, the clerk's office, and they're very supportive of that concept or idea as well. So that's, that's what we're looking at.
Storage of the equipment alone would be a bonus for the election equipment?
Right. Yes, yes. And currently, the election equipment is stored in this building and what was the old health department. When, when we do move into the jail, there's, there's one idea that we could use the, the space downstairs that's going to be vacated by the sheriff's department of this building and turn that into storage for voting machines. But it's not ideal because it's in the, in the basement of this building and they'll be moving these, these large voting machines with the elevator or potentially the stairs. But I think the elevator most likely be what they utilize, and that's just not ideal either. So, yes, it would be ideal to have them stored where Elections is. And currently, Elections has a storage room that flanks their, their, their regular offices. Unfortunately, it's full and these new voting machines are double the size. So there's just no space to store them. So that's what we're looking for. And, and, you know, as for the, the current jail, there's not yet an agreement. But as most of you know, there is a party who's interested in the building. They're doing a feasibility study and doing what, what they need to do on their end. And then, of course, we can sign agreements later.
Anything else for Commissioner?
So are you looking for a vote of confidence from us to move forward with appraisals?
Yeah.
And for having a meaningful conversation with the Bowen Center after those appraisals come back? Because obviously, we're not going to pay above appraised value or what we're allowed to pay. So I don't know what the timeframe is or how that's going to happen. But my support's behind that as long as it's noted that it's a conversation that still has to come back to us, obviously, for approval.
Yep, absolutely. Yes.
And that was, that was the conversation when I contacted all of you was, was, you know, they just wanted our blessing, I guess you could say, to move forward to get some appraisals, but not a purchase, agree? So yeah, to answer your question, Thor, yeah, they would have proceeded with some of that, but they got to come back to us before the purchase, anything.
I look at part of what I guess I'm trying to make a point of is that we're giving them permission to have conversations with the Bowen Center once those appraisals come back.
Yep.
Before they come back to us.
Okay.
I'm in agreeance with that also.
And my conversation with Tom was that I just, as Commissioner, I respect very much what council's role is and what their, what their position is on things. I, I don't want to, the commissioners don't want to invest money in appraisals or invest time in conversations on pricing if it's not the will of council that we proceed. So yes, a vote of confidence or a consensus or however you feel most comfortable moving forward.
I would be in favor of this, Chad, assuming that the appraised value is closer or more than what we're willing to pay, so.
Okay.
And I'm sure Chad will keep us up and informed on those appraisals too, so, yeah, I believe you can go proceed. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
I want to echo what you had to say about our clerk's office and the election system on it. I think it was just under 73% of the registered voters in Willy County.
Yeah, amazing numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Next, we have the minutes. We've got two sets of minutes. The first one will be our regular meeting. So I need a motion and a second to approve our October the 8th, 2024 minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve October the 8th, 2024 minutes.
Okay.
A motion and a second, and that is for our regular meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Okay? This one? Okay, and the second one is the executive session we had right after our October 8th, 2024 meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve those notes.
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve those. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I wasn't present for that. I lost my feed.
All right. Motion passed. Anything else from the public? If not, I need a motion, do I need a motion to adjourn? No, meeting adjourned, thank you. There is a personnel committee right after.